Thank you, Councilman Lebron.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here with us this evening. I am reconvening from yesterday's OMBGA meeting to order. This is the OMB Operations Management and Budget Process for the budget for year 2223. I am Malley Rosado, co-chair of the OMBGA Committee, along with Councilman Clark, who's the other co-chair in this committee. I also have Councilwoman Rosetti, Councilwoman Tiana Hercules, Councilman Mikstam, Councilman Lebron, Councilman Sanchez will be joining us shortly, and Councilwoman Shirley Sargent. With us also is our town clerk, and also Eric Lussa from the town clerk's department. So without further ado today on our agenda, first we'll have the Hartford -- apologize. First, we'll have the Board of Education, followed by the Fire Department. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. Yep, I got it. Yep. You didn't get it, no?
Yes.
Do you want me to send it to you?
Yes.
It's fine, okay. You have the floor, Dr. Leslie.
Thank you. So we are here to present the 2022-2023 budget for Hartford Public Schools. And just to give you an overview of our presentation, so I'll begin with an executive summary, our district model of excellence, which highlights our priorities, and then, of course, our budget development process, our revenue expenses, and a little bit around COVID funding. And then we'll touch upon our efforts to maintain our financial sustainability. So with regard to the executive summary, there are seven key summarized items. And this budget is based on what we know to be true today. We do not expect to have a forecasted deficit as we enter next school year. The budget does assume flat funding from the City of Hartford, and that is in alignment with your budget, the city's budget. The budget also represents the first full implementation of our equity-based budget. So pre-COVID, we did engage our community in developing our equity-centered budget formula and process. And so we knew that that was going to be a three-year process to implement. We did begin year one, which is 1920, and then we finished implementing that process. And what that process does is ensure that the schools that need additional supports and resources are allocated those resources. Also, while we were adhering to that equity-centered process and formula, we also had to take into account that certain schools needed additional adjustments based on the circumstances of grade levels or the entire school. Also, there is more certainty about the expenses than there is about the revenue. We know, you know, as we continue through the year and into next year, we'll know more about some of the specific grants. And with regard to estimates, right, we know that we needed to make some estimates. We, you know, our team did use best business judgment with regard to where have we been with our finances, our budgeting in the past, what are the current conditions that exist today, especially given the pandemic and our recovery, and then, of course, future expectations. And then lastly, many of the new positions that were requested across our schools are focused on social emotional wellness of our students. And those include student engagement specialists, additional family and community support providers, behavior technicians, in-school suspensions. And we were specific in leveraging COVID relief funding because the grant criteria does allow us to use those funds to hire those positions now instead of waiting for next year. So that's really an executive summary behind the budget. And, you know, the budget does take into account the fact that we have what we call these very three complex issues. One is, it's not new to any of you, but it's the fact that we, in this community, have a greater need, given the communities that we serve, and that there is inequity in terms of some of the students' needs. There are ongoing constraints with regard to how we serve our students, and there are unpredictable costs. Some of those are, you know, you see there in the third area there, increased financial pressure with drops in revenue, and of course, the enrollment, which is unstable in Hartford Public Schools, given the fact that we operate within a school choice ecosystem. We are focused, you know, one of our priorities, so we have four priorities. One is, you know, the true business of what we do, which is teaching and learning. We want to make sure that we deliver high-quality teaching and learning in partnership with our families and our communities, and that we have schools that are welcoming and caring, and that we're tending to our skillful staff and effective operations. And so developing this budget, making sure that there's alignment with our priorities, is something that is important to us. And before we dive into the details of the budget, this is a slide that some of you might recall, and it just highlights, you know, some of the work that we've done in the past three, four years with regard to our budget. And it actually shows our efforts to, you know, be financially fiscally prudent. And so we have mitigated $117 million since, you know, the '15-'16 budget cycle. And that is a total of an elimination of 388 positions, 300 of those at schools, and 36 -- sorry, 86 across central office. And so, you know, we know that we've had challenges with regards to financial sustainability. We've taken the steps around central office overhead, positions in schools, at central office, consolidating and co-locating schools. But we know that, you know, there have been some challenges as a result of those efforts to mitigate our budget, right? Impacts on hiring, slowing -- slowed down our processing times, and, you know, now we have loss of key analytics because there were people, right, that we had to reduce across these years. And with regard to the budget development process, when we did engage our community with regard to how can we make our budget process better, there were some key themes that we heard as to how we could drive long-term outcomes. And one was stability. You know, our community really was asking for equity and funding, and making sure that that was the foundation to everything that we did when we were allocating resources. Our community and our board wanted to ensure that there was strong alignment between our priorities, our strategic plan, and obviously, our budget, and that we simplify the process, that we make sure that we had processes and tools that were easy, especially for our school leaders, to build their budget and monitor their budget, that there were -- that there was transparency in our decision-making process, and that we were able to sustain, that we were sure to have the best-in-class, student-based programs, and that we were able to compete nationally in terms of recruiting the best staff and retaining our best staff, and that we had financial, a fiscal sustainability project, which we have begun to do, and that we don't sacrifice today with regard to our decisions what we do long-term for our students. So Chief Penn, I can turn it over to you so you can speak to where are we currently now with those recommendations that we heard from our community, and then get into the details of the budget.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, everybody. My name is Philip Penn. I'm the district chief financial officer. I arrived here in June of last year. So I've been with the district for about 10 months now, and I'm happy to kind of take you through the remainder of the presentation in terms of where we are from a budget cycle. Equity Funding Formula, we're going to touch on.
Excuse me, could you move the mic closer to you so we could hear you? Thank you.
Is that better? Yeah, okay. Okay, is that good now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to take you through some of the remaining slides of the presentation, giving you an overview of sort of how we develop the budget, key metrics in the budget, and sort of where we see things going from here. Equity Funding Formula, we're going to go over in some detail in a little bit, but 2223 will be the first year of full implementation, as the superintendent mentioned. We've accelerated the whole budget process by about a month. So the Board of Education voted to adopt this budget back in the middle of February. The reason is, it gets us out earlier in terms of recruiting people coming out of college into teaching positions, which is critical for us. What we found is that we're at a competitive disadvantage with other districts, that if our salary offer was conditional on an approved budget, and in other districts was not, and they were comparable, we would typically lose that candidate to the other district. So with an approved budget by the Board of Education, we can move forward with unconditional offers. Alview is going to be an important part of the process going forward. It is a cloud-based, point-and-click-type system. It's not an accounting software. It's software that sits on top of our Munis software, which you may have heard before. We operate on the same system that the city does, of course, and it pulls data overnight into Alview so that people can see, people who are non-financial people can easily see what's going on in their budget at any given time, and then we can use that as a budgeting tool as well going forward. Implementation of our needs-based staffing models, you'll see a little bit of that going forward as well in the presentation. And as the district sort of shifts its focus now beyond just the next year, I'm a big believer in trying to make sure that we're not making decisions right now that are going to sacrifice or cause harm down the road. That's kind of the way I've operated in my entire career, and I don't plan on changing that now that I'm here in Hartford anytime soon. So Alview, and you kind of see a bit of a screenshot around this, gives you sort of real-time information around where we are at any given point. Alview kind of tries to make financial information accessible for everybody, even for people that are not that well-grounded in finance. And beyond internal staff, we also opened up Alview this year for people that were the presidents of the school governance councils to be able to see the data real-time as the budget was being developed. We also gave access to our Board of Ed members so that they could also see the data as it was being developed. And coming this summer, we now understand that there's going to be a portal that people that in the broader community can go in and see that data in a dashboard as well. You can't go in and change it, you don't have access to our budgetary data that way, but you can see, if you wanted to point-and-click down to a school level, down to an expense level, you can actually see the real-time information that way. And I'm in the process of trying to consult with other districts in terms of how do we -- how do they do best practices? People that have implemented this before us, how can we gain knowledge from what they've implemented at this point? Enrollment, as you might guess, is a key driver of our expenses. You know, a lot of our expenses are directly tied to the student population. We've seen declines in the last several years, and looking out, our initial estimate for 2223 was 17,400 students, give or take. Frankly, we think that's at risk. We started this year with only 17,100, and there's a lot of stuff in flux right now. We're still seeing some of the impacts of COVID-related drops in our enrollment, and we don't know what's going to happen now with CCP, the Comprehensive Choice Program that was adopted in the court system, what implementation that is going to have for an impact for us going forward. But clearly, you know, we need to be able to plan for things going forward because there's an impact to our state and federal funding in the grants that are tied to our enrollment data. They've kind of held us harmless at both the federal and the state level for the last two years. That loss of hold harmless will probably begin next year as we start to see the grants start to come in. So equity school funding. I know you have this in your packages. I promise I won't go through every different line, but what you'll see here is that we've tried to break down supplies, stipends, staffing, in key areas within each of the different schools, based on the population that they have. And in addition to that, we've also tried to get a situation where we've got people pushing the needs exactly where they need to be in terms of trying to combat chronic absenteeism, making sure that we have multilingual learners covered with additional resources, making sure that we've got flexible dollars that the principals, who really know their schools best, have some flexible opportunity to decide, how do they want to spend this going forward? And I could tell you that anecdotally, when I was the chief financial officer for the New Haven Public Schools prior to coming here in Hartford, I had seen this about a year and a half ago, and made some efforts trying to indoctrinate some of these principles within New Haven as well. These are very well-developed. I think it sort of takes an academic exercise around how do we allocate resources that are scarce in the best way possible to deliver it to where the student need is highest? But as the superintendent also described, it wasn't cookie cutter. We held individual budget meetings with all 39 of the schools internally, so to make sure that we were covering everything that they needed. And if they had extenuating circumstances, that was our opportunity for their opportunity to describe them to us, and we made staffing adjustments based on the outcome of those conversations. So even though we stuck to the model, we still made exceptions where we thought the need justified it. So overall, we're more or less expecting flat revenues going into next year. The education's cost-sharing grant, the base one, will be flat because any kind of increases we see in that will be done through the Alliance Grant instead. We're also anticipating flat funding from the City of Hartford going forward into next year. Federal grants, we're expecting a little bit of a decline overall because the carryover that we had into '21-'22 was very high because the state allowed us to carry over more funds as a result of the pandemic. I'm not anticipating they'll allow us to do the same level of carryover into next year. The increase in state grants, that's primarily due to the Alliance Grant increase of about 2.2 million. And then this is a key area of focus for us in the fiscal sustainability we'll talk about in a little bit, is what are we able to obtain from private grants, tuition billing, things that are sort of outside of the normal state and federal funding that we typically see? And what's our ability to develop that going forward? And we have now taken into Hartford Public Schools the right level of staffing, I think, to support that going forward, in terms of a grant writer who's dedicated to full-time developing new opportunities for us. There's our senior advisor for advancement, who is out there canvassing for additional funds from corporation foundations and things of that nature. So I feel like there's a lot of opportunity in growing that space going forward, knowing that federal and state funding is probably going to be constrained as we go forward in the next few years. The next slide is just a breakdown of the overall different grants that we have coming into the system, in addition to what we see coming through our general fund. And as I mentioned, we're essentially flat. We're up about $170,000 overall projected from the current year into next year. This next slide in your package needs a little bit of an explanation. It shows that we're down into next year by about 9.7 million. Keep in mind that that's a comparison to the adjusted budget that we're in right now. And what I mean by that is, when we adopted the '21-'22 budget, we then got additional grants that came in after the budget was adopted to the tune of around $10 million. So realistically, the carried number that we have in our budget is almost $433 million this year. So when you compare the adopted budget that we proposed for next year, the adjusted budget for next year, it shows about a $9.7 million decline. And you can kind of see where those major areas are in terms of what we're anticipating. There are adjustments that we put into the budget in terms of a 2% vacancy factor for next year, which I think is appropriate and frankly aggressive compared to where we are right now. We have also put in things, you'll see a big drop in professional services and a big drop in miscellaneous purchase services. That's where we typically contract out for other staff. So we take that out of the current year budget in the anticipation that we're hopeful that we get the staffing that covers those positions. If not, we'll shift that the other way as the year develops. And the one other thing I do want to kind of call out on this is the increase in utilities costs. That, I think, is going to be with us for some period of time. We do piggyback with the city in terms of our utility contracts. We know we're paying a lot more for natural gas right now than we have in the past because we went out and we're basically paying market rates now right now, because as the contract expired, we didn't want to lock in a price that was going to be sky-high for the next three years. So there is some exposure there, but to the extent that electricity, natural gas, and other utilities continue to drive some of this expense growth going forward. As we said a little while ago, this is kind of our first look at how enrollment factors into our per-people spending. And while enrollment is important, one of the things that you should take away from this slide is it's not the absolute driver necessarily. As we've been talking about throughout the presentation, we're trying to shift resources to where they're most needed on a per-student basis. So you'll see that there's a lot of variation in terms of the enrollment, which is the blue line, and that you'll see an equal amount of variation against that blue line in the orange bars that are our per-people spending. So clearly, it's not -- it's a factor, but it's not necessarily the deciding factor when we look at per-people spend. And this second slide on per-people spending, you know, breaks it down a slightly different way. When we look at our neighborhood schools versus our magnet schools, what you're going to see is two things. There's a lot of variation within each of those groups in terms of per-people spend. And I think the second thing you'll notice in this slide is it kind of dispels the perception that's out there that there's more per-people spending in magnet schools than there is in these neighborhood schools. This actually says it's exactly the opposite, that on average, we spend quite a bit more on a per-pupil basis in our neighborhood schools than we do in our magnet schools. Rough sense of where we are on our ESR funding, ESR R funding, we've got roughly $126 million that are still available to us over the next three years. So far, through the end of this past March, we spent about $28 million. We're at a spending rate of a little over $1 million a month, and I anticipate that will start to increase quite a bit into next year. And we're trying to prioritize the spending, you know, as we go forward based on the expiration dates. So you'll notice that out of the $10.3 million that we were awarded for ESR I, which expires this coming September, we still have, we've spent about $9 million, leaving us about $1 million to go. And the intent is to not give back any of this money, to make sure it's fully expended by the time the grant expires. So as the superintendent mentioned, we're in the middle of a fiscal sustainability project right now. This has been ongoing work for me since I got here, working with one of our consulting partners. And really, what it's trying to do is look out over the horizon for the next three to five years and say, what would it take for us, given the vision that's in our strategic operating plan, to sort of figure out what we want to have for sustained investments coming out of the ESR spending that we're doing right now? What's our opportunity to reallocate resources within the general fund budget? And how do we disrupt the existing cost structures that we have to slow the rate of growth of expenses, to increase the rate of growth on our revenues, and get those two back in line? And what you see on this next slide is, if we do nothing right now, there's a projected increase of eight and a half percent over the next couple of years, or about $35 million. So if we do nothing, the projected cost increase is about $35 million. So what's our opportunity to lower the rate of growth on the costs? And what's our rate of our opportunity to also grow the revenue, as I mentioned, going forward? And we're really focused on trying to make ourselves into a more sustainable model going forward, because right now, you can't take 8% growth in that manner over a three-year period without the additional funding that goes with it. So what are the big areas that we're focused on? What are the big buckets? Certified salaries, non-certified salaries, and benefits make up about 60% of our total spend. When you throw in tuition payments that we pay to other districts, it adds another 23%. So incredibly, 83% of our total spend is just on those two items, people and what we pay in tuition. So in terms of figuring out what we're going to do in terms of rethinking the teacher role, what's our ability to build better pipelines to get teachers in from our existing staff? How do we address retention and recruiting costs going forward? How do we address learning loss that's associated with the turnover in staff? Benefits, we're going to go to market in '23-'24 to look at different carriers that we have. We haven't gone to market, as I understand it, in a few years, and it's an appropriate time to do it. We also evaluate the cost of the state plan every year to make sure that the plan that we're operating on is the lowest-cost model that we have available to us. Tuition, in terms of disrupting that cost structure going forward, we're doing a lot of work right now to bring in-house programs for special-needs students, where typically we had paid for tuition for outside services. We're also doing a lot around early intervention, what we call multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. You may hear that acronym quite a bit with the public schools. That's making sure that we're putting the appropriate resources with the students in the very early grades to make sure the problems that they're having with academic learning right now don't become much bigger problems down the road. And lastly, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do from tuition is we know that we've kind of got this de facto open-market competition for students right now. We compete against the surrounding area school districts, we compete against CRAK, we compete against LEARN. We've got to put the best product out there that we possibly can to continue to attract students to Hartford Public Schools, and to regain our students that have gone to other districts or to either of those. Superintendent, I think you're going to take the next slide, right?
And actually, that's just some specific details as to how we're exploring the levers. So there are some short-term priorities, and there's some long-term priorities. I know this is a busy slide, I'm not going to dive into all of it. But at your leisure, you can see some of the examples of what we are exploring, you know, how can we support teachers differently with investments in terms of their incentives, their pay, maybe having additional leadership roles across our schools for our teachers, thinking about opportunities for partnerships in a different way, especially around our special education students, to serve them better in-house.
So the last slide we want to make direct comments on is the shifting dynamics we've started to see in the last couple of months here. Since we started the fiscal sustainability project, two major developments. CCP, the new chef settlement, if it gets approved by the court, has the potential to draw a lot of Hartford Public School students away from the public schools over the next 10 years, possibly doing an impact of as high as $44 million. Some of that could potentially be mitigated through our increased enrollment of our own and our own magnet schools. And there's a piece of legislation that's in the process of going through the approval process right now called House Bill HB 5283. That's one that I've personally been involved with since it was drafted, in terms of providing commentary and meeting with the House Speaker and other leadership members to try to get this passed. 5283 potentially has a $25 million a year positive impact on Hartford Public Schools beginning in fiscal '25. And the way that it would work is, it would shift the burden of general education tuition payments that we make now to the rest instead. So instead of paying directly to CRAK and to LEARN, the state would take over that responsibility. That's worth about $21 million a year to us. Second thing it would do is it would accelerate, and you may have heard that the state's in the middle of this 10-year plan to accelerate ECS funding or to fully fund education, it would take what would be due to Hartford Public Schools in fiscal year '29 and move that up to fiscal year 2025. Now, the reason that they picked fiscal 2025 is important because they know that the ESR funding runs out in fiscal 2024. So they know that this is becoming then the opportunity for us to take a look at, what investments are we making in these ESR programs right now that we want to continue to go forward? And there are going to be some of those. So if we have that visibility, that we have, that we've got this new opportunity of the $225 million a year, it then gives us sustainability on some of those initiatives beginning in that year. So as I understand it, the bill has made it onto the House calendar again. I get nervous right about now because I think there's only five or six days left in the session. So we're tracking this on a daily basis to see that hopefully this gets called to the floor for a vote. And if it does, it's got some very strong potential for us. The remainder of the slides in the packet are additional information that our board had asked as we went through the budgetary process. I'm happy to take questions on that. I won't take you through all that detail. I won't take you through all that detail. Although I did get a heads up from Ms. Hockenhold that there were two questions that surfaced quite a bit as you've gone through other budgetary presentations. The first question being, how many staff do you have are Hartford residents? So out of the 3,391 employees we have right now, 767 or 23% are Hartford residents. And I know the second question was, how many vacancies do you have right now? And the answer's around roughly 210. 210. Yeah. All right. And with that, I know the superintendent and I would be happy to take... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Yes, so the question around the vacancies, I also do want to clarify that. We did start the year with about 200 positions that were part of our ESER and ARP. And so when Chief Penn references that number, it is inclusive of the additional positions that we added as a result of the COVID relief funds.
Thank you. Councilman Lebron, do you have questions for the superintendent?
No. That... Yeah.
So, thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Good to see you again. And thank you always for your Herculean work with our children. And I thank you CFO for your presentation. Just in general, one of the things that you saw us moving around, really what it was, I hope it wasn't to distract you, is this slide that we have came out mumbled, so we didn't get the... So it comes out like this, so we didn't get a lot of the wording, and we couldn't able to read it. So that's just one wordsmithing thing. You guys could send us the right presentation. The other thing too is that in the budget book, we only got like two pages worth of materials. I'm not sure, it looks like, I looked over the past two years, it seems like that's pretty standard. However, what I would say is that it makes it tremendously difficult for us to come prepared for questions, because there's not a lot of meat on the bones, per se. And so we have to wait to the presentations, which is why we're like... And then they come like this, which is why we're like, you know... Again, that's just my opinion. The other thing too is that with wording, one of the things that I've seen throughout the presentation, and one of the things that I'll start with, and I say this often, is that words matter, right? The words that we use matter. And so it's been referred to, and I don't know if this is the correct presentation, that's why I'm going to say it, so it might be a little bit of a wordsmithing, but it's referenced as stagnant, like the city is being stagnant towards budgeting, right? Which is generally a condescending word, or it has negative connotation overtones. Whereas in other places, you use level funding, right? Which tends to be like, okay, we understand the situation and so forth like that. So, you know, it makes it seem as if like, you know, it's a negative thing, where it's just like, okay, we're providing level funding. So again, just a wordsmithing there, because there's inconsistencies about that between stagnant and level. The question that I have around magnets, I understand we have two like really big House Bills that can swing the pendulum in either way. And I hope that we're lobbying for the positive way, right? So we could get that. As it stands right now, is the magnet business good business in Hartford?
So we operate our own magnets, and I will tell you that our children are served in... Many of our children are served very well in magnets, in our magnets and magnet operated by others. And we know that many of our children still don't have access to all magnets, right? So that becomes a challenge.
No, but I just, so not talking about the efforts and the academics that we're trying to provide them, but fiscally, is it... Are we losing money operating magnets? I guess is the question. Because I see that we're spending money out to other districts for magnets. Are we receiving money for the kids that are attending our school with magnets? And I guess what's the difference? What's the plus or minus there?
Now, your question's a good one. I will tell you that the magnet school operating grant that we receive from the state is about $56 million a year. And all that $56 million goes to supporting the operations of the magnet schools that we have here in Hartford. There is a general fund contribution to those schools as well, so it doesn't carry the full value of what it costs to operate those schools. And there's really two components to what we pay to outside districts when it comes to external magnets. $21 million is only the general education piece of that, right? So that's the base tuition. What the state also has us responsible for in that respect is the special education costs that are associated with our students that attend those magnets as well. And if you could roll back to Slide 22, you sort of see the breakout of that. And it's actually the bigger piece, frankly, than what we pay externally. It's about $40 million worth of special education costs. So if I was thinking about it on a net basis, I think we probably spend more money than we take in on magnet schools, for sure. And I will be happy to go back and try and put that together in a more definitive answer for you, but just thinking through the components, I think we're a net exporter of expense than we are a receiver of income.
So just a couple of things on that. So with the special education spending, that's a national trend, right? We're starting to see upward directions of special education spending. It's not just a Hartford-based thing, I think it's statewide. So I think it's a broader issue that I think the state has to address in some fashion. So, you know... But what I would say in terms of the magnets, and if you can tell me, there's a narrative out there with the magnets that districts aren't paying their full price. So what I mean is, X-town, I'm not going to name a town, because we're being recorded, and they might come after me, but X-town sends 10, 20 kids to the district. We're not seeing the full amount that they're supposed to be sending. Is this a false statement, or is it an accurate statement?
Councilman, would you mind re-stating that one more time?
Sure.
I want to make sure I understand the way it's being phrased.
So, when a scholar gets sent to Hartford, the Hartford School, to a magnet school in Hartford? Or I imagine that they could come through a choice program too, right? So the district that is sending the scholar has an obligation to send dollars over for that scholar. Is that correct, or no?
That's not correct. Actually for a magnet. Not for a magnet, though, because we get that from the state, if it's special ed.
For a special ed education?
No, 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 for magnet students.
No. I don't think that's actually correct. And the reason I say that is, we receive funding from the state for the tuition that we have for the magnets that we operate. So other than special education costs, I don't see the sending district to be as responsible for paying that tuition.
Okay, right. And so that's why that House Bill is important, because it adds to the money that the district... I'm just trying to, is the money coming from the state, or the money that we're asking for would be coming from districts? Because it seems as if we're paying for students to go to magnets outside of Hartford, why wouldn't we receive funding for the kids that are coming into Hartford? I don't know, that just seems... I know, because it seems like we're just getting the flat $56 million to operate, right?
So that $56 million is tied to the enrollment that we have in our magnet schools that are both Hartford residents, we receive a dollar amount per student, and then for anybody that's outside of Hartford, we receive a much higher dollar amount per student. So it is tied to enrollment that way.
Okay, great. So it is fluid year to year, based upon enrollment?
Oh, it absolutely is fluid. We literally just finalized it today.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just learning, learning as I go.
And Councilman, if I may, through the President, just to address the earlier concern, is we'll make sure that we get you a PDF of this presentation so you see the full formatting.
Okay.
And in terms of the detail, I should mention that we prepare for our board a full budget book with a lot more detail. We'll make sure that we include that as part of this process going forward, and we'll get you the one that we issued for this year.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So there's also a recommendation, I think on this year, that there's a decrease, a potential decrease of $1.2 million, 0.9%. Is that from the feds? We're anticipating a decrease from the feds of 0.9%?
Can you tie me back to the number you're referring to?
Okay, so on our budget book, right?
Yeah.
So I made a copy of it, so it's 31.1. It says significant features. I'll read it out for you. It says Hartford Public School is dependent on state, federal, and other funding sources that are categorized as special funds budget.
Yes.
The projected FY 2023 special funds budget totals $138,722.
Thank you for clarifying. It is the federal piece, that's correct.
Thank you. The second thing in this year's budget book is for FY '22 revised.
Yes.
There, from FY '22 adopted to FY '22 revised, there is $60 million difference between '21, '22 adopted, and '23 recommended. Is that $60 million reflected of the COVID funds?
It is. And that's why we tried to pull that out of our presentation, because we knew that was going to make things kind of murky. If we had $50 million swinging from year to year, I don't think anybody could have followed the presentation, including me, so...
Thank you. And just two more, Madam President, through you. So the City of Hartford provides in-kind services for goods and services. What is the in-kind?
We know we have a shared service agreement for MHIS, our IT support. We have legal support that we get from the city, crossing guards, it's things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, I promise, and thank you for your patience, is there was on the council resolution, item number 16 from December 2020, there was a commitment of $2.7 million for the budget. But I don't, I didn't see how that $2.7 million, I guess there was a surplus or something, and yeah, how that $2.7 million was spent?
So in the two fiscal years prior to the current one, the council had allowed a transfer of the budgetary surplus to a non-lapsing account. And that non-lapsing account cannot be more than 2% of our general fund operating budget. So as it stands right now, there's $5.6 million sitting in a non-lapsing account that you can actually see if you know where to look for it in the audited financial statements that will now carry over to next year. But we know that we can't use that money without council's approval, that if we found ourselves in some difficult financial situation, we know that's available to us, but we would have to come here first to say, this is the purpose, we'd like to use it and have the council support to do so, assuming our Board of Ed had already approved it.
Correct. So are we saying that the money's still like in that account?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because, and Dr. Torres Rodriguez, please correct me if I'm wrong, I thought there was a plan for that already. No? I must be mistaken. I thought there was a plan for it, no?
No, we were very explicit to say, you know, future, we know that we have a financial sustainability challenge, and that we do have a funding cliff that is going to face us in two years.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm all set, Madam President.
Councilman Sanchez?
Thank you, through you, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent, for the great presentation, very detailed. Most of my questions have been answered through Councilman Lebron, but there are a couple of things here. So this, what we have here is just a one-pager, front and back. I would like to know if you can send that budget, that budget book you have that's more detailed, to all the nine members of council, please?
Absolutely.
All right, so that we can look into it more in that...
I apologize. If I only implied that I was only going to send it to Councilman Lebron, that wasn't the intent. It would have gone to everybody on the council.
Okay, thank you. And then now, just to go back with, you know, with what, piggyback on Councilman Lebron's question about city services. It's well-known that the Hartford School System has its own treasurer's office, its own HR maintenance department. Has there been a study to consolidate these departments with the city?
So to my knowledge, there's no treasurer's office on our side.
No treasurer's?
No.
Finance department?
Finance is me and my team, that's correct. There is an OTM department, Office of Talent Management. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any conversations around merging or shared services. I'll let the superintendent sort of address that as well.
There were a few conversations earlier on with the MARB as to exploring that, and through conversations, it was not the most appropriate thing for us to do. It was not an official study that was done, but given the delineation of, you know, the Board of Ed, the schools, and the operations, we're moving forward, we were moving forward as currently the shared services stand.
So has there been funds allocated for the study so that we can move forward?
We have not requested a study. We're not requesting the study.
So why not? I mean, we're looking to alleviate the costs, the expenditures, by sharing the services that the city has and working with the school system. Why not have that study?
In the work that we have done with our consultants, there has not been a suggestion that has been made with regard to sharing services to help manage close to an additional 4,000 employees.
So that's per recommendation, or not? I'm just, I'm having a hard time understanding, why not have a study so that we can consolidate the departments that are similar?
So based on the work that we've done with our consultants, it has not been a recommendation of them for us to consider doing that.
So it wasn't recommend, the recommendation wasn't there because it wasn't asked for that, correct?
They looked at everything, and it wasn't a recommendation that they made for us to do.
Okay. All right. So, and then in this detailed budget book that you have, will it let us know the number of employees per department and that... Okay.
Absolutely, per department, per school, yes.
And that's it? Rest of the information I already received, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sure. And Dr. Torres Rodriguez, for the record, when a councilperson asks for any type of report, can you just share with all council, coming from any of the council? Councilwoman Shirley Surgeon, do you have any questions? Councilman Assistant Majority Clerk?
Thank you, Madam, I'll cheer through you. Dr. Torres Rodriguez, a great presentation, as always. The Board of Ed has not adopted its upcoming fiscal year. It has already?
It has in February, so that we can get ahead and be competitive with other school districts who usually have their budgets passed earlier than we used to.
Right, so, okay, that's good to know. So how is the upcoming state budget going to impact potentially Hartford Public Schools and the services it provides?
Well, if we, if there's the bill that gets passed, we know what we're looking at two years from now. But Chief Penn, if you can speak to, there's not much of significant difference.
No, there really is not. You know, we've looked at the preliminary data that was shared by the governor. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, there may be an adjustment to our alliance district increase that's resulting from the loss of the whole harmless on the enrollment that we have. But there's not anything else that would be significant to '22, '23 that we see percolating in the system right now. It's more long-term than that.
That's great. And I'm not sure if you covered it in your presentation, are there any grants that are going to be sunsetted for the upcoming fiscal year?
It's going to be sunsetted, good question. I believe, and I would need to go back and take a look, that most of the grants that we have right now continue on until the next fiscal year. In fact, I know that there is a revenue source slide that we provided in the presentation that actually shows that, what the anticipated funding is for this year versus next year. So, yeah, it's a good question, though. I'll follow up on that.
Thank you. And as always, you all do phenomenal work, and I continue to say that you have done a great job during the course of this pandemic which we have been in, and I know it's been very strenuous on you all and also too on the district. And so if there's anything that I can do from my office to support you all, please let me know. And I hope that this bill, the mental health bill that was just passed by the state will actually be impactful in the school district performing additional services to our children in our community that are suffering through COVID.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Council Assistant Majority Leader, Rizetti.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you. First off, daughter of a teacher, product of the Hartford Public Schools, granted some years back. Quick question on Budget Book 31-1 last year and Budget Book 31-1 this year, significant features, first paragraph. Both years, it says, and maybe you can explain this to me, it is anticipated the Board of Education will provide a transfer for crossing guard... It is anticipated the Board of Education will provide a transfer for crossing guard staff and related costs. It's the same both years? What are we doing?
Yeah, it's the same both years, that's right. We do it now, I think it's either quarterly or semiannually. We get a bill for the city for the services provided by the crossing guards, and we reimburse the city for that cost.
Okay. Second question, it's going to take something that you have to get back to, certainly send it to all of us, but it's really mostly from residents that I've talked to. I would really love to have a five-year look back. How many, and I know that was in some of your slides, but how many students we've had over five years? What correlating budget, correlating graduations, and correlating absenteeism? Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Assistant Majority Leader. Councilwoman Hercules?
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation. Similarly to what Councilwoman Rosetti said, we've talked about a lot of numbers, obviously mostly of the budgetary nature. Obviously, this is a budget hearing, our budget presentation, but certainly as a parent, I would love to see some numbers that reflect outcomes, right? And so when we're talking about some of these priorities over a year, it would be great to see the, what that means, what that translates into numbers. So, how many students are reading at grade level, how many students are graduating in, not only from high school, but also from college, and how that is reflected in the budget. I think it's important to be able to capture that so we can really see if the investment is going towards the outcomes that we anticipate and that we're hoping to achieve. When we talk about parents feeling welcomed and a culturally accepting place, how are we really capturing that data? How is it being reflected and translated? And then how does that trickle back to the dollars that we're spending for those efforts would be very helpful. Some of the other numbers that may be addressed in the more detailed budget book, so we, you talked about 767 Hartford residents being employed by the public school system. It would be interesting to see where those numbers break down. Are we talking about teachers? Are we talking about janitors? Are we talking about counselors? It'd be really helpful to know where that resident demographic is reflected in our school systems. And I'd love to hear what we're doing about the 210 vacancies around recruitment and retention, particularly when we talk about teachers of color and educators of color and from diverse backgrounds. Data shows that students in urban areas do better when they have teachers that look like them in the classroom. So I would love to hear about some of those efforts and where, what part of the budget goes towards that, so it'd be very helpful.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hercules. Councilman Mixton?
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks to the both of you for this presentation and all the work we're not seeing right now that went into doing it. I, yeah, I also wanted to follow up basically on what Councilwoman Hercules said. I would like to know if there is a plan, I saw you have a plan for recruiting nationwide, but what is the plan for hiring local faculty and faculty of color? Because, I mean, I, my son's a senior in high school right now, and, you know, his friend group does not look like his teachers. And I hear, and I work in the juvenile court, I deal with a lot of kids who go to school here, and I hear it from them as well, right? And like Councilwoman Hercules said, that makes a difference. Is there, is there a working plan? Is there money in the budget for that? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely. And there's actually a bigger investment through our COVID relief funding. You know, one of the four must-wins is to make sure that we have sustainable teacher pipeline, especially able to focus on our teachers of color. That was the one feedback that was prevalent across all stakeholders. And so, we are actually, we just launched, I think it was a week ago, our marketing campaign, and it has a specific focus on teachers that were, you know, from Hartford and are now teachers and teacher leaders. And, you know, one specific task that we've charged ourselves with is to focus on our paraeducators and that pipeline. We know that we have over 400 paraeducators, and so we have built-in funding to support with their certification, with going back to school and getting those additional credits so that they can move into teaching positions in our district. And that is actually our most diverse group, staff group.
What are, in terms of that plan, like, what measures do you have in place for yourself? How will you come to this point next year and say, you know, we've succeeded? Or what goals do you have concretely to say this is working or not?
So I will, I don't want to minimize it, but the number one goal that we have is to have no vacancies, you know, at the beginning of the school year next year. And, you know, we know that that's a challenge, given that the vacancies that we normally had before because of retirements, because of folks leaving to other districts, or taking positions, leadership positions, right, within our schools, that has doubled because now we have the influx of money. And part of our recovery strategy is to provide more adults for students across our schools. And so that is the number one goal. And then we have secondary goals, right? Making sure that priorities are on more staff of color. And whether or not we can, we can get there, you know, time will tell, but we are being very aggressive in trying to combat that partnerships with our higher ed, higher education partners. You know, the challenge here is that, you know, this is something that also, pipelines take time, right? They, we just don't create a pipeline overnight. And so we have to make sure that we continue to build now for later.
Thank you. So, a partly related question maybe, and this is also based on my own experience as a parent and a lot of feedback that I've gotten from constituents, is that communication with schools is really hard. I mean, I know, my son's at the Trinity Magnet, and it is, you know, because I have called you to help me get in touch with people at the school who don't answer their phone or their emails. And I am a person who has time and resources and speaks English, and that is not a lot of my constituents. And, and it is all the more so, and this I know from my day job, for folks who are dealing with special ed. I mean, and I have dealt with special ed for my own child, and I used to be a special ed lawyer, and it was still like a heavy lift. And so I, you know, I wonder at how, I mean, you talked about the fact that families leave the schools, right? Families are going to take advantage to go out to other places. And one of the things that I hear from constituents is that they get much better response when they, they've left Hartford Schools and they go to some suburban district. And the response they get, the calls back, the help at, at special ed meetings is much better. And I wonder if, what is in place? I know that every district, as much as no one will admit it, fights special ed. It's how it's built, it's money, I understand. But what's in place in terms of communication and feedback so that parents at least can report when they have a problem, if they don't have the superintendent's phone number? And can, so that can improve, because there's a problem.
Yeah, and we can continue to communicate with the families all the, several ways, right? From our anonymous line to our family and community support providers, which actually was an investment that our board made in making sure that we have family and community support providers across all of our schools. And then we, you know, we have added staffing at the welcome center. And so to us is making sure that our families understand that while, yes, we would like them to call directly to the school, there are others, right, in the school and even at central office that can step in and support.
And I guess a similar, what is the measure, how do you know concretely that that's working? Like, what will you look at a year from now and say, this is, here's how we know it's better?
Yeah, so one of the ways is, we have our, we hope that, you know, there's a parent survey that we submit twice a year that really asks around these specific questions as to whether our parents not only feel heard, but that they have the information. That was probably, during COVID, it was the time in which we felt, I mean, we saw that that number was at the highest with regard to the amount of communication. The difference was that the district was, you know, kind of sending most of the communication. So that was, you know, an eye-opener for us as to where's the disconnect, to your point, across some of our schools. And so through the survey and then, you know, having those anecdotal conversations with our families as well.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dr. Torres. My questions were answered when Councilman Sanchez and Councilwoman Rosetti asked their questions. Thank you for a great presentation and for your leadership. As Councilman Clark stated, did you have a question, Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so Dr. Torres has, to be out of here, she has a hard stop. Is it a question that you have, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for the presentation. There's a long, long question after Councilman George and after you mentioned staffing issue. And you talk about, and talk about having, fully understand, you know, the one thing we'd like to know is your partner or your, what is it, the principals, vice principals of color? And let's see that, and I think we're talking about, you know, the staff. I think one of the things is the leadership, is that, so, do you guys, you know, really assess, you know, a value assessment to our children?
I could not agree with you more. We actually, so pre-COVID, we did have our own principal pipeline that we developed and we implemented with our assistant principals, and we're seeing the fruit of that now. We have appointed six principals this year. Five of those have been our assistant principals that we have grown at home in Hartford. Five of those are principals of color. And so that is something that has been on the top of the list several years ago, and we're seeing the fruit of it now.
Right.
I just want to comment before, as, thank you, Madam Chair. I do watch your communication, and I see the conviction. And I just want to bring that we can actually make you a leader, so, because it's something positive we have actually seen in the community. And our kids, you know, have you rockin', uh, environment, all people, they're back, so, more, I give you so. I can make it more than you actually know.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Surgeon. With that said, just like Councilman Clark said, my office is here to support you, and thank you for your presentation, and I hope you have a safe flight. Thank you. Thank you. So I'm getting feedback that Councilwoman Shirley Surgeon, when she was speaking, her mic was not on, so I need to make sure that it's working correctly. Did it not? It's on now. It wasn't before. Okay, now turn it on. Yes, on, right. It's on in red. I mean, it's off in red. When it's on, it's not red. Good evening, Chief. We're ready when you are. Sure. Pardon? Pass it for everybody? Okay.
Good evening. Council President and fellow council members, thank you for having me tonight to present the Hartford Fire Department's budget. I will be brief, so as to leave room for any questions at the end of the presentation. So as you know, the mission statement of the Hartford Fire Department is up on the screen. We are all hazard division of the city. We provide services in a professional and expeditious manner. We do everything from fire, EMS, hazardous materials, and technical rescue. Also, we are a regional resource to Region 3. We've been called to other towns to assist with technical rescues such as confined space, trench rescues. We also have several members that serve on the Capital Region Hazmat Team. So if there is an incident in another town, our unit, Hazmat 35, gets called to service. We also have several members who participate in the Connecticut Urban Search and Rescue Team. So, we do it all. We get called for everything, and we're always happy to serve. As you can see, this is our organizational chart with me as the chief at the top of the chart. I have two assistant chiefs. One is in charge of support services, the other in charge of emergency services. From my office, we have an executive assistant, an executive officer, and a chief's aide. From suppression side, you have tour commander who's in charge of the district chiefs. We have two districts, north and south. And what is not depicted on this slide is there's four groups. So we also have four tour commanders, four district chiefs for East Division, and they supervise the companies. On the support side, we have Equipment Maintenance Division, the FACT Division who services our IT department as well as the traffic signals and Call Before You Dig. We also have our FMO unit who does inspections of our facilities and residential properties in the city, as well as Special Services Unit who delivers public licensed education. So some of the fire department highlights, as you know, I served under Chief Friedman for four years as his assistant chief of operations when he left to pursue other avenues in Oakland, California, which he, he throws the sunshine in my face every time I talk to him in the warm weather. But I've served as the interim for, up until September of last year, when I was officially made the chief of the department. And I continue to be elated to serve the citizens and the businesses alike in this city. The renovations at Station 11 is still ongoing. Our expectation is to move into that firehouse by the end of May. This firehouse is going to be unique as it's going to be the first firehouse that has a male and female changing room. We're doing something different with the lighting system, which is called step-down lighting. So when the alarms are activated, it gradually increases as to not shock the individuals in the bunk room when they're sleeping. There's been several studies that indicate that in the long term, that's not really good for firefighters to just be woken up out of their sleep, and we've been subject to that for many years. We are housing three companies along with some spare apparatuses, so it is definitely going to be a lot roomier. We're re-updating the appliances, updating the HVAC system, the roof, the windows, ADA compliant, the whole nine. So it's going to be a beautiful fire station. We hope to continue that through the process with our other firehouses as well. We hired, recently hired 20 new recruits. They're on the line serving in the capacity. Our plan is something new this year with the recruits. We plan to rotate them through all five of our two-piece houses. Right now, they're serving their first six months in a two-piece house. And then after that, they'll be serving four months in each additional house, which will bring them around the city in about a year and a half. So what that serves is we get other officers to lay eyes on them, and also they get to see the entire city. So what that serves is we get other officers to lay eyes on them, and also they get to see the entire city and how we do it on the south end, east, west, and north. So they'll get a real view, 360 view of every company in the city. So we did over eighty-three alarms, smoke alarms this year. In the packet that I handed you, there's some numbers from 2019 on up to 2022. You can see a significant decrease, but that was due to COVID. People are just reluctant in letting individuals in their houses even to do community service. So that number went down slightly along with community risk reduction. But our special services unit did manage to reach people virtually and after fires and during relocations. The calls for service are particularly unchanged every year. We do about thirty thousand calls for service each year between EMS and fire and other calls like rescue calls and hazardous material calls. So the faith-based initiative with HPD, we do that on a continual basis, which includes recruitment for Hartford residents or in some public education. We do specialized events, especially during COVID when it initially hit. We did a lot of drive-by celebrations for birthdays, retirements. Anything that the neighborhood asks us to do, we happily comply with that. So some of the strategic initiatives that we did in terms of employee engagement. So we created a couple of new committees. We created a research and development committee for new equipment and industry best practices to see what's out there in the other departments and how we can use that. We recruited new firefighters, some district chiefs. We tried to get everyone in from every rank of the department to participate in these committees. And then we do some wear tests when it comes to bucket gear, station wear, tools and equipment. So that's how we keep our employees engaged. We have frequent meetings with our officers. So every month, we have a meeting with the tour commanders. Every month, I have a meeting with all of the division heads. And then biannually, we have meetings with our lieutenants. And then biannually, the meeting with lieutenants and station visits as well. So we do annual station inspections just to figure out if there's any hard issues with the station or if there are any gear needs or necessities. Plus, the guys are always happy to see the administration out in the street with them when we're not at a fire. Our annual performance review, that is a great tool that we use on a monthly basis. We just completed our annual compliance report for our accreditation. That report was submitted and accepted, so we are golden on accreditation for another year. We acquired a new records management system, which is ERS, that helps our individuals in the field do their reports in a timely manner. And we still do FireStat on a monthly basis, which is a performance measurement of how the individuals in the firehouse respond to calls. So there are certain criterias and benchmarks that they have to meet. And when we present that data to the department, they can see, you know, what their, where their benchmarks are. And there's usually a friendly rivalry amongst companies to try to be at a hundred percent versus eighty or seventy-two percent. So the public education, community engagement. So we created a new monthly newsletter. We hired a new captain for special services. He came in, hit the ground running, created a bunch of new programs. He created a bunch of new informational pamphlets, which he hands out to all the NRZ meetings. He condenses the information that we normally give at these NRZ meetings. So it's more user-friendly. And he's doing a great job along with the other individuals in special services unit. So the equipment upgrades. So our equipment upgrades are things that we normally put in our business cases. But again, when we talk about the research and development team, those guys are awesome. They go out and they research industry best practices. So for instance, we recently upgraded to battery-powered extrication tubes. All of our truck companies have, what you are familiar with, called the jaws of life. It's usually a pneumatic piece of equipment, now it's battery-powered. We have a few saws that, we call them vent saws, that are going to be battery-powered. And we're looking into other equipment, such as ventilation equipment, that can run off batteries. We're looking into another, what we call a master stream device, that's more portable, it's more maneuverable. But those are some of the things that we look for when we look for new equipment and upgrades. Also, on another note, as far as equipment, we're currently doing wear tests with our new firefighter protective gear. So the new gear that we're looking at, it's a lot, it allows the firefighters to be more mobile, and it's a lot breathable, and it is less weight. We're looking into new SCBAs that are lighter. They're lighter and the components are easily swapped out. So those are some of the things that we're looking into in terms of new equipment. So identifying high-hazard buildings, that work is being done by our Fire Marshal's Office. They, between doing their current inspections and new construction and fire investigation. Keep in mind, they've been short-staffed for about three years. And they do an awesome job, but in reality, they can't get to every structure. But they still keep up with the high-hazard areas. Some of those buildings are identified too by the men and women on the line when they go out and do what we call fire safety surveys. So during the warmer months, a company will go out for two hours, survey their prospective areas. They'll go to businesses or they go to residents, and they'll provide information and feedback. And if they see violations, they forward those violations to the FMO's office. So more often times than not, they'll go to a structure to do an inspection because it was a referral from a citizen or a referral from the firefighters on the line. So our professional development program, we continue to commit to that. We have a PDP program where we're instituting for professional development. So when, if a person aspires to be an officer or a lieutenant or a captain, we have a list of classes that we think they should take or we encourage them to take to help them be a better supervisor. What we also do is every fiscal year, we set aside money. And any individual in the fire department that wants to apply for a class, we will pay for that class and cover their time. So there is plenty of opportunity for us to assist our firefighters in becoming better firefighters. And it's amazing, they definitely take it up on the opportunity. So training, our training division is the backbone of the department. That's where we do our ocean mandated training. We recently did fire ops with some dignitaries, some news personalities. So we go down there mostly during the summer months, and we do what they call a live burn. It's a simulated, it's a simulated fire in a brick building. It's a structure that we have at our training academy. So, and we go over the basics, hose deployment, search and rescue, throwing ladders, opening up a roof. We even go over positioning the apparatus when we get to a fire scene. So those are some of the crucial steps that we need to refresh every year in order to maintain proficiency. Our capital improvement plan, that was a ten-year plan that was submitted to the city, and we're trying to stick with that plan. DPW has been excellent along with the city in providing funding and resources for us to fix up our eighty-year-old firehouses. We have probably two that's pushing a hundred years old. But they've been phenomenal in helping us institute our capital improvement plan. So international accreditation, as I stated, was submitted, and we're good for another year. That process helps us review our expectations and our benchmarks that we try to maintain within the city. So as you can see on the next slide, the budget comparison. So the general fund was thirty-seven million for fiscal year 2023. We recommended forty. The change in two million four hundred, what is that? I can't even see it.
Two point four.
Two point four million was due to growth increments and also the grants. The two sixty-one, two nineteen, that was due to our radio grant that we received and EMPG. So budget highlights, areas of focus, six point five cent increase in 2022. That was due to contractual obligations. So our new firefighters and promoters are receiving their growth increments. When we first came on, it was, they were reaching top step in about three years. Now, the growth increment for them to get to top step is about seven years. So that's why the increase in growth increments. So the increase is in the cost of equipment. So pre-pandemic, if we paid a dollar twenty-five for a can of oil, it's increased exponentially. So part of our capital improvement and VET is vehicles that we're continually asking for. The average vehicle engine hours is supposed to be about fifteen thousand hours. Ours are pushing double that. So with the increase in wear and tear, our mechanics are continually working to keep up the maintenance on our equipment. And that cost, it's was, it's part of what's driving our budget up. Because before, when we would get parts at a reasonable price, we can no longer do that. So aid in recovery of the coronavirus pandemic. So when the pandemic first started, we as a department purchased pandemic supplies for us and the city. And we've maintained that surplus, whether it through be our, whether it be through our own funding or requests that we did through the state via the WebEOC. So we still have a healthy surplus of pandemic supplies in terms of gowns, masks, N95 masks, surgical masks, gloves. And we continue to monitor and account for those type of things. So our overtime management, we continue, we monitor the overtime management. But since we have a minimum manning, we can't fall below seventy-three. And once that happens, we have to hire overtime. It's been, through the pandemic, it's been difficult to manage those expectations with the onset of COVID and members just through attrition leaving and some members out for more than ten to fourteen days. We have to cover that cost. We, we received, we had a lot of injuries in the past two years, that long-term injuries. So as a department, I started the ADA process for individuals that were on long-term injuries and could no longer do the job, which that alleviated a few spots, but it didn't totally alleviate the need for overtime. So our apparatus replacement plan, we want to thank the city for actually agreeing to the replacement plan. We currently have three new vehicles, two pumpers. One is currently being built and one new ladder apparatus. And that, the second one is currently being built as well. We have two new FMO vehicles. We have two staff cars that's coming. So the city has been very giving when it comes to our apparatuses and equipment. So facility repair and renovation. As I stated, we hope to move back into Engine Eleven by the end of May. The next firehouse slated for repair is Engine Five, and then we're going to repair the training academy. So what we've done in conjunction with DPW is they've hired a consultant to do an analysis on each fire station. And that's about twenty thousand dollars. And that's, that includes everything. That includes structural integrity, HVAC system, electrical system. And some of that cost is incurred because they have to bring in outside specialists to do that. And it's, it's around twenty grand, and it's been very helpful in determining what exactly we need to repair some of our antiquated firehouses. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Mixdom, followed by Co-Chair Clark.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the both of you for coming down and preparing all this. A couple of questions about staffing. I know we used to have two, hold on, two training captains.
Yes, sir.
Till, I don't know, two years ago. And then one of those was cut from the budget. Is there a plan to have another one back? Would we be better off with another one back? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yes, sir. To answer your question, we would definitely be better off with our second captain. As he, that particular captain was in charge of EMS. And as you know, we're the sole EMS provider in terms of the first responders besides Edna and Amr having a PSA. We have been talking and strategizing on a way to make our training division look more favorable. So there is what we call a career track. So what happens is, once you get stuck in a division, you don't really get to transfer out to another division unless you have to test. So what, we've been proposing some suggestions to make the training division linked to support, linked to suppression. So what we want to do is make it one test. So you have to pass suppression and some training. Because in reality, every company officer in suppression does company-level training. And so every captain does some type of training as well. So if we can combine that one testing unit and the individual test for that one test, the last five lieutenants will be training lieutenants, and the last two captains will be training captains. And the plan for us is to have those individuals do about sixty-four hours a year required in suppression to maintain their core competency.
Just so I understand you, right. So you're saying that in essence, although it would be good to have another training captain, you assume because the money's not there, are figuring out a way to sort of share out the work of the second training captain with other folks?
To a certain extent, sir. They will be assigned to training, it's just they won't lose their chance to be a suppression captain. Because everyone, almost everyone in the department wants to be what we call on the line. They want to be out serving the community, fighting fires, doing EMS. And you don't particularly get to do that when you're assigned to the training division. So it's not particularly attractive to most people. But in order for us to get those individuals in there, we're trying to strategize a way to make it more attractive while still having the opportunity to serve on the line. And again, I think due to attrition. And again, I think due to attrition, we had a lot of people leaving. So some of those spots weren't filled. Like some people took the test, they passed it, they took the position and then they retired maybe a month or two or three months later. Now we're in a position with a hundred and twenty six new folks and the majority of people being under fifteen years. I'm quite confident that if we gave that test and those individuals took that spot, they'll be there for the long haul.
So do I understand you as saying that perhaps in the future that the number of captains, like that could change in the future as people come up through the ranks is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I'm hoping in the near future, like by the end of, before the end of the year is what I'm hoping.
Okay, another, another question is about prevention lieutenants. I think there's eleven, yes, eleven, but my understanding is that that might not have the department in compliance with state mandates for the number of prevention personnel?
It's not that it won't have the number of, that's not, it's not a compliance issue, the number of fire prevention lieutenants is what we accomplish as a city. So if you take into account the hours of training, the fire investigations, the recertification of CEUs, new construction, plan reviews, there's simply just not enough marshals to accomplish that and keep up with the number of inspections that we have to do. And in that division, we've been unfortunately, we've had a lot of injuries. And through the attrition process, we had a few individuals that were on long term injury. And so instead of having them hang around knowing that they can't do the job, that's why we started that process so we can free up those individuals and get retested and get individuals in. So currently we have five new FMO fire prevention lieutenants in class as we speak. Getting ready to be certified and take up those five positions. And we only have one position that's unfunded. So we'll be at currently maximum capacity besides that one individual, that one spot that's not funded. We could potentially be having two more individuals retire, do the injury or just they have their time to go. And then we'll fill those spots as quickly as we can. But in reality, what would be beneficial if we had twenty more inspectors?
I'm sorry, say that last part, I know it would be beneficial.
If we had twenty more inspectors on top of the twelve that we already have.
And what's keeping us from that is money?
I would say money, yes, sir.
Do you, can you ballpark me what that, that would cost?
So one inspector is ninety seven, about ninety seven thousand a year for one inspector.
So twenty grand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Co-Chair Clark?
Thank you, through you. Chief, thank you for your presentation. A few questions regarding the fleet. You mentioned that you've got some new vehicles, some toys coming online. And I wanted to know, just wanted to dive into that a little bit deeper. I know some of the district chiefs are in the SUV vehicles.
Yes, sir.
Are you expecting any of those new fleet to come online anytime soon? Because I'm quite sure that there's some that are reaching this life expectancy.
Yes, sir. So instead of going with SUVs, we went with a Chevy twenty five hundred quad cap. And they put a cover on the back of the bed. We, I just went down last week to North Haven to take a look at it and spec it out so we can figure out, along with one of my district chiefs. So the design concept, we took a survey with one of the committees and we said, what do you all want? Do you want to stay with the SUV or do you want to go to pickup? And they chose the pickup and it's, it's a beautiful truck. So we went down last week to spec it out, figure out where we're going to put the lights, how we're going to lay out the back of the bed. And that's currently in production right now as we speak, being fabricated to the specific designs of the district chiefs and tour commanders.
Now, what's, what was the rationale between sticking with SUV and going to this flatbed truck with the cover?
So sir, there's a few things. One is the clean cap concept. So what that is, is currently in the fire service, everyone is conscious of cancer prevention. And so we would, what we don't want to have happen is when our men and women, our incident commanders at a fire and they get soot and dirt on their gear, they have to put it in the back of SUV and it's not separated. So in this concept, it's in, it's actually separated from where their seat, where they sit at. There's also a few things that we can do in terms of providing extra equipment like batteries, flashlights on a continual charging basis. So when we're at the incident, if someone needs a new battery, they can just go to the back of that, get the battery, put it in the radio and keep working. Our machine shop is really good at fabricating things. In this concept, the back tailgate opens up. So during inclement weather, they can stay under there, they can flip down the SDI screen, which is our, our electronic accountability system and then pull out a tray and get whatever they want without getting wet and still be in command of the incident.
Are they going to be equipped with a hitch?
Yes, sir. They, so in the plan is to future proof them. So in, once that vehicle gets beyond its use, we can take the, the back cover off, use it as a pickup truck until the phone trailer or till the boat, but we can just recycle it for another purpose.
Okay, so it's a pretty big truck. I'm not, is it?
Yeah, it's a four door.
Okay, okay.
It doesn't look big, it's chunky though.
So how many of those are coming, you're looking to have come online?
So we, we ordered two, one for District One, one for District Two. The second one, we was hoping to take delivery from the dealership. This May was supposed to come in with the first one, but as you all know, there's been shipping delays. But the one vehicle is down in North Haven, getting worked on, outfitted with lights and things of that nature. And then we, we're supposed to receive an SUV and that's going to go to the shift commander, the tour commander.
And how would those vehicles pay? Were they through CIP or were they through the fire department's budget?
VET, sir.
I'm sorry?
VET?
VET?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other vehicles that you need that you have not received yet?
We're still waiting on our pumper, ladder truck. We could use like four pumpers, two ladder trucks. If you go work your magic and get me more vehicles, I will not deny them.
So what's, some other question is, is what are the, what are the costs?
So a pumper and a ladder truck is around a million dollars, between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars. What we proposed to do was to maybe stagger it, make one vehicle a year. Because what we don't want to do is just buy five vehicles at one time. And then when all five starts to go, we got to buy five more. So what we want to do is stagger maybe a pumper this year and then every two years a ladder truck. Until we get the fleet up in a manageable position where we don't have to keep replacing it. And we also have spares.
Any additional vehicles that are lesser than amount?
Staff cars, FMO.
Fire marshal?
Yes, sir. Yep, for the same reasons, they're just rundown and old.
Run down, yeah, run down the, what are they, Ford expeditions that they're driving?
The, the, the FMO cars, we're going to go all pickups. So the two captains currently have Ford, what is it? Ford Ranger pickup. So those are the two newest vehicles in FMO.
And in a perfect situation, what would you want them to, what new vehicle would you want them to have?
The FMO pickups.
FMO pickups?
Yes, sir.
What's that cost?
It was like thirty, thirty five thousand.
Thirty five K?
Yes, sir.
How many?
Twelve.
You need twelve, okay. I'm not sure if I haven't worked that much magic.
I'll take, I'll take nine or eight.
Nine?
Take nine.
But they're about thirty five each, right?
Yes, sir.
I'll see what I can do.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Assistant Majority Leader Rosati?
Chief, your first budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you to your department. I was, I was sitting here and I was thinking, thirty years ago this year, I lost a family member to a fire. So I understand what you do and your department every day. You know, I was looking at the budget book from last year and this year, and maybe you can explain it to me. Because I feel like maybe we're missing something. There's a SAFER grant that got discontinued in twenty twenty one, but I keep seeing it. And I mean, the definition is staffing for adequate fire and emergency resources, responses. So if we don't have that, but we keep putting it in, how are we doing that? Is that, does that make sense? Sorry.
No.
It does. The, so the SAFER grant is, was designed to bring your staffing up to the level it needs to be. So back in two thousand eighteen, I believe it was, when we first applied for it, our staffing was way down. And so they were, they gave us seventy new firefighters at that point in time. That brought us up to the three hundred and twenty where we, where we needed to be. And so now we're at that level. And so the SAFER grant is only useful for, or it's only awarded if you need to increase your staffing. And so we're not actually asking to increase it. And so we can apply for it, but we don't, we don't come across as a need at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, understood. And then my second piece, and maybe it's something you can get back to me on or you know. How do we encourage females to, you know, become firefighters? How do we compare to other cities as far as our percentage? And is there a trend for more? And, you know, when I look at, you know, the explorers and the cadets, do we have a pipeline equally? Well, maybe not equally, but encouragement of young women and young men. And you don't have to answer all of it if you don't know right now, but I'd appreciate something.
So it's, and thank you for that question. One of our biggest, one of our biggest selling points is when the community see our female firefighters out actually fighting fires. And we also have a female lieutenant who does community engagement. So we're, whenever we get a chance, we're constantly trying to recruit females. It's, it doesn't take for, it doesn't take to all of them, but there, there are a few that really are interested. But across departments, we are doing very well. We have our percentage as compared to other departments when it comes to females. We're, we're actually doing good with the size of our department. So yep, right now we have nineteen females and five? Five percent, how many officers? Five officers are females right now.
Do, do you have some type of plan to, you know, continue to incentivize or increase that over the next, you know, three to five years?
So I, I just met with, maybe two weeks, two or three weeks ago with a nice lady about recruiting females to the fire department. It was a virtual meeting and we'll be following up to, so she can assist the department with that endeavor.
Thank you, Assistant Majority Leader. Councilman Sanchez followed by Councilman LeBron.
Evening, Chief. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just looking at this document that you just passed to us. So right now, we have a total of three hundred sixty seven positions, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now that the three sixty seven, eight are vacancies. Is that right?
Yep, yes, sir. Eight vacancies.
Eight, okay. And that's after the, the class that just recently graduated of twenty one?
Correct.
All right, and then now we also have six vacancies in the cadet program.
Yes, sir.
Okay. How is the cadet program working out now? Has there been any amendments to the cadet program so we can match the program that the HPD has? Where they have a, an opportunity for benefits, paying it to the MRF, making a forty hour cadet program rather than a part time? Has there been any movement in that conversation?
No, sir. We did put in a business case in, in those terms in trying to increase the cadet program and make it full time. But unfortunately, we didn't get approved for that one.
So can you send that to council please, so that we can review it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then going back to the firehouse number five and fire station number eleven, number eleven is at Cincinnati Avenue, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that a full renovation or just partial renovation?
It's a full renovation. Yeah, I mean, it, it wasn't gutted, but it wasn't gutted completely, but the ceiling tiles, it, it went through asbestos remediation. So basically everything was taken out and replaced or rebuilt.
All right, and that's, and that's the, that's the structure that's receiving the COED or, you know, separate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then firehouse number five, can you, which one is that one?
That's on Signy Street.
Signy Street. So I've been there plenty of times. So that's also getting renovated, right?
It's slated to be next, once we've done with engine eleven.
And when are you expecting for, and I know you mentioned that earlier, when is fire station number eleven going to be completed?
So we're hoping to move in by the end of May. But we've experienced some delays with deliveries such as windows or lockers. But anything that is not a quality of life issue, that's not going to prevent us from moving in. So for instance, the, they redid the pole holes, that's where in the movies you see the guys line the pole. But by code, it's supposed to be enclosed. So those doors and that, that enclosure has not come yet. But that's not going to inhibit us from moving in. We'll just, we'll just board it up and guys could take the stairs until that particular piece comes. But that's not something that's going to stop us from moving in.
All right, thank you for that. Now, going back to the eight vacancies, what are the plans to fill those eight or is it necessary to have them filled now? Or are you, are you planning to wait several months so that you can stagger the next class?
So some of the vacancies, we, we have to fill contractually, but that's through the testing process. There, there's a few vacancies where there's outside hire and depending on if the individual has a skill set. But we will, and some of them are promotion, right, drivers? But as we, as we, as certain positions open up and we have a certified list in place, we fill those positions immediately.
Okay. And my last question, mutual aid to our neighboring towns. What's the percentage of mutual aid has the fire department provided?
Is that mutually going out or coming in?
I'm sorry?
Mutually going out to other towns or mutually coming in?
No, out to support the towns.
I don't have the number exactly percentage wise, but what I can tell you definitively is we go out more often than they come in.
And the reason why I ask that, is there any type of compensation for this mutual aid? Is there some understanding where if we meet a certain percentage? Because my understanding is this, that obviously HFD is the most professional fire department we have in this country, right? And when we go out, for example, either Newington or West Hartford, they're mostly volunteer firefighters. And what I've seen or understand is that when we go out to a fire in those towns, we're actually fighting the fire while, while their firefighters are more or less standby because of the difference in experience. Is, is that true? Or is there a similarity to that?
I would say about fifty percent, sir. Like Hartford is a very aggressive department. I would say about fifty percent, sir. Like, Hartford is a very aggressive department. And so when, normally when we're called to a different town for mutual aid is because they're out of resources. So, and, and they rely on us to backfill their stations. So it ends up being that when we're called in for mutual aid, it's the cover station for other calls for service. But once that fire starts getting out of control, nine times out of ten, we'll go from covering the station to going to the fire ground. And, you know, we put it out. I'm sorry. We just put there, we, we put out a lot of people's fires.
Okay. And then just my last question through you, Madam President. What is, do we have a calculation of how much money we, we spend in, in mutual aid and on EMS call? And, and when I say EMS call, do, do, you know, we're still the first responder. But we hand over the, the patient or, you know, the victim to the, to the EMS crew that, that arrives after the fact, right?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we have a number behind this service that we, we perform prior to the, you know, EMS arriving where the insurance covers their cost but not ours? Am I explaining it right?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, in Hartford, we don't have what they call split billing. Some other towns, they do, they share the cost of the bill that they send out to the patient. Unfortunately, we don't have that here. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's because of the level of, so there's different levels of EMS. So there's EMT, which is the basic, and then paramedics. Currently, we're EMR, so we don't administer medication besides Narcan. And then we do a lot of BLS, first aid, cardiac arrest, things of that nature. So our main job is to make sure that individual doesn't go into cardiac arrest and keep that person comfortable until higher level of care arrives. So we don't, we, we've, we've talked about split billing and we've talked about going, moving forward to EMT. I personally think that the city deserves a higher level of care from its fire department. But that, you know, that incurs a cost. And we've, we've presented three plans in terms of EMS, going straight to EMT, fly cars, and paramedics. But that's, it, it's nothing I can do like arbitrarily. I can't just say, oh, we're going to be EM. It, it's got to be worked out between the city and medical control.
All right. And when you presented that, those three options, was it with the state legislation?
No, I believe it was with city leadership and I, I thought Chief Freeman gave it to council as well.
Do you recall that? Now, can, can you send that to us again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman LeBron.
Chief, thank you for your report and, and both of you for your continued dedicated service to Hartford. Councilman, when Councilman Sanchez brought up that mutual aid, it just made me think of a thousand more questions. So I'll call you differently about that. And the second comment I'll make is when Councilman Clark was offering the transportation services, it sounded like we were ordering from a drive-through, like, so if you wanted to supersize these, these, these vehicles. But nonetheless, what I want to start off is with a strength-based statement in terms of, in terms of presentations, I want to thank you for providing us with the org chart. You know, this answers a lot of questions for us. And then the second thing is in terms of transparency, your demographics, I mean, this is like spot on. Thank you for this because these tend to be the same questions we ask folks over and over again. And so if other directors are listening, I would highly recommend they add these here. What I want to start with is the EAP Coordinator.
Yes, sir.
So, and my understanding is that stands for Employee Assistance?
Yes, sir.
And so I realize that there's probably a high level of PTSD, vicarious trauma, things of that nature. How long has that seat been vacant? And what are we doing to support our firefighters in lieu of?
So our EAP Coordinator, it's unfortunate for us, but it's fortunate for him. He promoted out into the FMO Division. And that's been about two months, maybe? A month or better? And so what we do is, and, and just to be clear for our EAP Coordinator, he's done a phenomenal job. Me and Chief Riley can tell you, coming up through the department, that the EAP Coordinator was not a person that you wanted to talk to if you didn't want to keep your conversation private. So this individual has done a phenomenal job, especially through the process of COVID. And he's instituted some programs like peer support where he has gotten retired firefighters who's, you know, who, who've been through some hard times and know how to talk to people, to be on the peer support. And not only from our department, from departments across the, the state. So that was, that was a definite loss for us. And in his exodus, we visited the firehouses and people really thanked him for what he's done. I mean, literally, people had tears. So what we've done is, and just to back up, what he does is he provides, he, he provides services, like he is the liaison between the department and services that individuals need. He doesn't technically go out and like, he'll listen to people, but he doesn't offer any, like, he doesn't work out of his scope. He, he's, he's taken enough classes where he can tell that, well, maybe you might want to talk to this person or, so he, he's done a phenomenal job. And that position is usually filled by, first, we start off with, we start out with an official notice to the department to see who's interested in the position. And then, once we get those candidates that send in their requests saying they're interested in the position, then we kind of survey through our own means and administration if that individual is suited for the job. Because there's, you know, there's some people that want to do it, but other people might not take that. So there's, there's a lot of different personality traits and some of his reputation too. But once we put that out to the department, we had two individuals apply for the job. And those interviews will be happening tomorrow.
Thank you. The next question, it says that we respond to approximately thirty thousand calls for service. And we're the busiest fire department in the state. And then Councilman Sanchez mentioned the mutual aid, so I understand that that probably increases it. Do other towns, are other towns, and excuse me if this is a naive question, but are other towns first responders as well? Or are we unique?
There are other towns that's first responders and a lot of them are, like West Hartford, they got paramedics, East Hartford is EMTs. So a lot of towns are, almost every department does some form of EMS.
Thank you. The next question I have is in regards to the Grants Department. Now, I realize you guys are out there putting out emergencies and, so there probably isn't someone that's focused on grants or development, I would imagine, within the, within the department. Is that correct?
Our strategic planning manager is really great at writing grants. He got us the, the grant for our radios, which was like a million dollars. And then he got us this last grant for additional radios, which was two hundred and four thousand.
Yeah. So I see here it's reduced down to sixty-one thousand. What can we do, our office do, what can, how can this city support to go out there and be aggressive? We're an aggressive fire department, using your language. How can we aggressively go out there and find more supports and grants? What would be your recommendation? And what are the current impediments from going out and doing that?
A new firehouse would be nice. Since we lost Pearl Street, right? We, we lost a lot of space. We lost a lot of storage space. And we're continually advocating for a new firehouse in a somewhat prime location. So we can, as the administration, get out of Pearl High Street and put our rescue unit in somewhere centrally located to the city. But we've been looking for grants that can assist us in funding to build a fire station. But we've been unsuccessful at the moment. So if there's anything y'all can do to get us a new station.
It's, so more specifically, is the relationship between here at City Hall and the Grants Department? Do they assist in any way in finding grants? You know, is there a relationship there besides the strategic person who found the other grants? How does that relationship work?
Yeah, there you go. This is my finding sky right here.
Uh, no, actually, the, the Grants Department here within City Hall has been fantastic. They, they support us. They're, they do bring up, when they see something, they'll bring it to our attention. For us, it, it just becomes, we're, we're just task, task saturated. Our strategic planning manager has a million other things that he's trying to take care of, as do I. And so just going out and trying to find these grants, there's just no time in the day to do it. If the Grants Division here could go out and, and find them and, and help us, write them up, which they do try to do, but I imagine they're shorthanded as well. There seems like, it seems like there seems to be quite the rollover there as well. With, because we've gone through quite a few different representatives for us up there. So. But yes, they, they've been doing their best. But I have yet to see one that come through that we didn't find ourselves.
Just want to just make a general comment to folks that are listening and to my council colleagues in regards to our fire department. Our budget overall is somewhere around half a billion dollars. Is that right, Majority Leader Clark, give or take, right? Five hundred million, six hundred million. But when you look at our operating budget, it's a billion dollars. And that's because four hundred thousand dollars are based in grants. And when I see, and not, there's nothing, nothing with you guys. And, and when I see the amount of work that you guys do, the risk you guys take on a daily basis, to see sixty thousand dollars in grants, I just want to just throw that out there, okay? When we approve grants considerably, if you saw the Board of Ed budget in terms of grants out there, we need to do something about this. We have to do a better job supporting our fire department with grants. And I apologize to you guys. And this is going to be on my radar. I am now a member of Public Safety. So hopefully we can make an impact because sixty thousand dollars is point oh, 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 one percent of four hundred million dollars. That is not acceptable. That's my final comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Shirley surgeon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And I certainly totally agree with you, Councilman, and I would very much like. I think, you know, basically, you should ask for all my questions. You know, one of my questions is, Councilman, you will do your part, give it to her. You know, wish list or the wishes you would have. And you certainly do those wish lists, if you need parts that can, you know, can be picked up trucks. So I'm certainly going to support your wishes the best way I can, I believe. But I also want to actually say thank you. Thank you to your leadership, because your training department, there's been two fires on my, where I live. And your firefighters have been set up. As a matter of fact, I saw a woman firefighter. And I was totally impressed with how she carried that with her job. And so for you, Chief, Councilman, Councilwoman Rosetti, oh yeah, she was great. I was sitting back and watching her. So thank you very much for doing so. And I hope to see more feeding the firefighters, because I know they can handle the job.
Yes, they can.
So I just want to thank you on the questions from the left, because you're giving us so much. You know, and I'm certainly going to support Councilwoman LeBron in making sure that the way to support you is best way that you can have to. One of the things I can realize in our city of Hartford is our structural difficulties. You know, wherever in the city, you know, and some structures are wooden, and we are, and we are so close to each other. That the training and what new amount of basic required by the knowledge base and how they put out fires.
Is this still not working?
There you go.
Now is it working? I got to start over again?
I heard you perfectly fine.
All right. I'm going to start over again. I think it's, I think there's a short in it. I think it kind of, um, yeah. But we're getting new equipment, right, Mr. Town Clerk? All right. So I'm going to start over again by congratulating you on, on your firefighters and for all the work that you guys have done. And in support of all your wish lists, from the new fire station to new automobiles. I want to thank you so very much. And I was very proud to have witnessed the new young lady firefighter when she was over by where I live, putting out a very dangerous fire. It, I was impressed with what she has done. And that is certainly shows how the city of Hartford is basically being equal. You know, but, you know, even though most of the firefighters over the years have been male, I see the females becoming much more dominant. And also your promotion regarding your rank and your leadership, including females. It is to be commended for what you have done. So I just want to thank you. No budget question, I will support my council colleagues on their support of your wish list. Yeah, so that is all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Hello, Chief. So I have just a couple of questions. So if we go to page twenty-one dash two, where it says, "Equipment Maintenance," can you define what entitles equipment maintenance?
So, is that, are you referring to the Equipment Maintenance Division? So Equipment Maintenance in general is the conditioning?
It includes the fire trucks, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So that's, 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 you know, the repair or replacement of our fire apparatuses, our hydraulic tools, our gas-powered tools. Some of it includes some maintenance inside the firehouse, like our generator system or primal vents. Sometimes they even go as far as fixing a garage door. But the Equipment Maintenance is anything that deals with the repair of our apparatus or our equipment that we use on a daily basis.
Thank you. So, and this is my, my question. So the other day, I was at Hartford Hospital and a couple of months ago. And I was at, I believe it's eighty-five Seymour, where there's the, the offices of all the doctors that before, there used to be a Friendly's downstairs, you know, what? Right across from the Children's Medical Center. Somebody dialed nine-one-one and two stations came out. And the, the firefighters were just sitting there, just waiting. Because there was nothing they could do. They had to wait for an ambulance. So my question is, has the Hartford Fire Department looked at saving costs as to when they're called out to a scene, for example, Hartford Hospital? I just found it concerning that. We had two stations go out to just get there and, and just wait for an ambulance to show up.
So we, we've had those talks amongst ourselves as well. You would think, being at a doctor's office, that you would need first responders, but unfortunately, that's, you know, that's how it is right now. But in, in terms of waiting for a higher level of care of EMS, our job is, once we get there, is to maintain and keep that patient stable until until a higher level of care can come and transport them to either the emergency room or, basically, the emergency room. But we just can't go treat and leave because that's, we can be charged with abandonment.
No, and I understand that. But what I saw that day, right, was the fire department got there, they went upstairs, they came downstairs, and they waited for an ambulance to come. But we're at Hartford Hospital.
Right.
Right? So I believe, in my opinion, I'm not an expert here, but if you're at the hospital, not even 500 feet away from the emergency room, that the same amount they would, it would take for an ambulance to get there, we're at Hartford Hospital, that there's a high cost. I mean, having these fire trucks come out, I could imagine the gas, the wear and tear is pretty expensive.
It is. And, you know, some calls that we go to that is not an actual medical emergency, we've had those discussions with our EMS partners and as well as our medical control. Thankfully, due to the mayor's initiative, when he funded the Hart team, we're hoping that some of those unnecessary calls that we go to will be alleviated from the Hartford Fire Department. And as you said, adding extra engine hours on a million-dollar piece of equipment for someone that it's not really a medical emergency. But to go back to your point in terms of doctor's offices and hospitals, since we have a PSA and ENMR has one, there is some legalities of us not responding to those doctor's offices. But we're, we continue to have those conversations to see if there's anything that we can do about it in, in terms of not responding, especially if it's a doctor's office. Because a lot of times, someone may be having difficulty breathing or chest pains. In those circumstances, yes, we have to go. But in other circumstances where they know it's a non-emergency, they just call 911 and we get, we get called to those particular calls. One of the things I want to point out when, in terms of EMS is, when you look at ENMR, they have what they call an A, B, and C call. A call is licensed sirens, emergency call. B call is probably like stubbed their toe. And C call is somewhere where they just need to be transported. So what happens after eight and a half minutes, if there is no ENMR available, that gets kicked up the fire as an A call. We don't have non-emergency calls. So every call for us is an emergency call. So now, we're going down the street, lights and sirens, to a person who stubbed their toe. But, you know, we, again, we've had those conversations as to where, right now, we're just trying to get to a point where if it's a C call for them, then it should be a C call for us.
Thank you, Chief. And I want to thank you for your leadership and thank your team for a great job. So with that said, if we don't have any more questions, I am going to recess this OMBGA committee to Tuesday, May 3, at 5:30, where we'll have the Hartford Public Library, Department of Families, Children, Youth, and Recreation, and also the Hartford Police Department presenting. We're now in recess. Thank you and have a good night.
You too, thank you.